First of all, I would just like to introduce myself. I'm Senior Pastor of the Passionate Church. We've been here situated in Groveland for some twelve plus years. Actually, we celebrate our twelve year celebration on October 30th. So we would like to invite all of you guys to come out and celebrate with your missions, goodness, save, encourage, and change. Allow the Lord to use us to save souls and to encourage hearts and then change our surrounding community for the positive, amen? So we're excited to be hosting this candidate forum tonight and to be working with Dave and the Groveland City Council to be putting this on. It will be recorded and later put on livestream for all the other citizens to enjoy as well. I wanted to open myself with a prayer. Can we all stand please? It is once said that only intelligent people can disagree. So we have to be intelligent tonight, even though we may find ourselves on different sides of the fence so to speak, we are all one in our Creator. We've celebrated as a church last night, Yom Kippur, which is on God's holy calendar, the most holy and day of the year. Last night, we brought it to a conclusion. And this is a time of year where we just know forgive us, cleanse, and also Lord, put us in Your good graces for the new year. And it's my prayer that we all do that tonight and that we'll be able to talk intelligently and really evaluate the candidates for who they are and how they can best serve this grace, amen? Father, we thank You, Almighty, for being the Creator of the universe. We thank You, Yeshua, for being the source, our King, our Lord. We thank You, Holy Spirit, for dwelling in us with the power to be successful and to glorify Your Spirit. I ask that you would bless this evening. Let us be able to speak intelligently, to disagree without being disagreeing. We give you all the praise and glory. We pray for this city, that you would elect the men and the women that you want to serve you by serving the citizens of Groveland. We give you all the praise and glory. Jesus, amen?
Would you please remain standing in front of the pledge? The pledge, agents.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please have a seat. Good evening, my name is David Colby. I'm the President and CEO of the South Lake Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be moderating this candidate forum this evening. Each candidate has been given a list of questions in advance, and they'll be given ninety seconds to answer each question. There will be no questions from the audience this evening, and we ask people to refrain from making noises or applauding until the end of the forum. At the end of the forum, the candidates will be available out in the lobby again for more questions. I'd like to direct your attention to the back of the room where we have some lights. A green light will come on when the candidates start speaking, and when they reach the sixty second mark or thirty seconds to go, the yellow light will come on. And when you have reached time, when time is up, the red light will come on. And Jennifer, our Chamber of Commerce Communications Manager, and thank you Jennifer for being here and doing that for us. We will also alternate the order which the questions will be answered. We don't want any candidate to always be first or always be last, so we'll start the first question. Mr. Rosario, you will answer first, Mr. Smith will be first for the second question. We'll just go down the row so everyone has, you know, equal chance not to be first or last all the time. So as I said, they've been given a list of questions, so we will start with you, Mr. Rosario. We had a committee that put these together. I'd like to thank Steve Elmore for being very instrumental in serving on our committee and helping put this whole forum together. The first question for the candidates this evening is what makes you uniquely qualified for this position? You might want to start off by saying your name as well as the position that you're running for.
First of all, my name is George Rosario. I'd like to thank the Chambers, I'd like to thank Hope International Board hosting this great event. What qualifies me for this position? First of all, I have not served in public office, okay? And because of that, no ideas as it comes in to our city with candidates and wanting to serve. I think that the most things that qualify individuals are various issues in what is affecting the city. So with regards to my qualifications at this position, I speak Spanish, am able to communicate with people. We have a very diverse city, and I'm sure that common sense and using the right direction and decisions make it of what's going on with the city of Groveland.
Thank you very much.
My name is James Smith. I'm also a candidate for mayor. And again, I would like to thank the Hope International Church, South Lake Chamber of Commerce for hosting this great event. To answer this question, what makes me uniquely qualified for this position? You know, it's not only that I have a desire to serve, but I have been serving in the public light of all my thought volume. I served twenty years in the military, and once I completed my career in the military, I entered into the education profession, which I am still serving as of this day. And amongst all of that, I still serve in my local community in various capacities, not only as a community activist, but also as an elected public official. I have served the city of Groveland over the last sixteen to seventeen years. I have been the mayor, I am a former mayor, I am also a former councilor. You know, and I think all of my training and all of my experience that I have gained along the way uniquely separates me apart from my opponents. I understand the challenges of Groveland and what Groveland is facing now and what we have faced in the past to get to where we are now, because I have been a part of it, and I've always used a common sense approach. You know, I'm focused, I do not entertain outside things, and I do believe that I am the best qualified candidate for that particular position. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Claude Wilson, and I too want to thank our host tonight. I'm running for the office of Mayor of the city of Groveland. And I've been a political activist in Groveland for the last eight years, attending meetings of all kinds. I spent a lot of time at the podium. I have butted heads against four different administrations. I keep a close eye on the taxes was charged, I keep a close eye on the spending in Groveland. I do a lot of records requests, I look at all the expenditures, and if I find something online, I question it. I either question it in public or I'll have a private meeting. I keep a close eye on the Florida statutes and the ordinances of the county and also the charter and the ordinance within the city of Groveland. I enjoy doing this. I like to shake it up a little bit with them, and sometimes I'm successful. I've had the opportunity to cut salaries on city council members. I've been able to stop a few contracts that I feel are wasteful, and it's just something I enjoy doing. I thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Ralph Morris. I'm the candidate for District Three. I too want to thank both the Charter Chamber and as well as Hope International for hosting this and giving us an opportunity to speak to all of you with our ideas so you can make a more informed decision. What makes me uniquely qualified? Well, it could be in part my over twenty years of business and finance and marketing experience. It could be my experience in the United States Navy and Special Forces, leading teams across the world, protecting our country and protecting what we hold true, our own values. But most of all, I think what makes me uniquely qualified is my ability to be able to listen. That's a lost art sometimes, being able to listen to people and listen to what they have to say, both you, the residents, and business, and the staff, being able to hear what needs to be addressed, and to be able to take action once you know what's necessary. It's also my ability to be able to bring people together. I've been working in this area, my wife Wendy and I have lived here for over twelve years, and I've been working in this area for some six of those, doing exactly that, able to bring people together and having a voice that's respected all throughout the county. That's what I bring to the table, that's why I offer, if you give me the opportunity to serve you and to serve the city with everything that we care about. I want to be able to bring to it what we all know that we've looked for, and that's the management and the growth that we need. That is time, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Deana Swett. I would like to thank the Chamber for this opportunity, and I am currently on the council and have been since February two thousand fourteen, and then I was re-elected in November of two thousand fourteen. Since I've been on the council, I have been elected as the first Vice President of the Lake Lake of Cities. I have represented Groveland on the MPO Committee as the alternate committee member and became the voting delegate when Mayor Laps could not attend the meetings, as well as a member of the South Lake Task Force. I am the official delegate for the Keep Lake Beautiful Committee. I am currently on the Growth Management Economic Affairs for the Florida Lake of Cities. Last year, I served on the Finance, Taxation, and Personnel Policy Committee. I am also a big advocate for the Groveland Senior Center, and I have been for the last ten years. I'm on the Board of Directors for Groveland Cares, which is a nonprofit that has served over thirty-five hundred free Thanksgiving dinners over the past nine years, and this will be our tenth anniversary. I was actively involved in the restoration of the Veterans Memorial Garden at the Purrier Building, and I have served on my HOA for twelve years, one year as treasurer, ten years as president, and I'm now Vice President. I believe I am more qualified to continue as a councilperson for District Three. I take my job very seriously as a councilwoman. I never miss a meeting, and believe me, we have a lot of committees that we're supposed to be on, and it's not easy.
Thank the Chamber and Pastor Tony Troy and Hope International for hosting this event. My name is Janice Bartlett. I'm a candidate for city of Groveland, Council District Five. What makes me uniquely qualified is my work and my experience having worked with government over fifteen years. I am also experienced by education. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't begin, I'm sorry. I have worked in volunteer with local government over fifteen years. I have gained expertise in economic revitalization. I have transportation management experience and service delivery as well. My understanding of working government and my connections with the neighboring jurisdiction, mainly Orlando, city of Orlando, and my relevant training in public policy has enabled me to be able to run for this position. I am uniquely blessed and with the ability to analyze budgets, to synthesize costs and benefits, and to communicate these issues to residents and to be able to work with my colleagues on the council.
Good evening, my name is John Griffin, candidate for District Five, Groveland City Council. The question that has been asked, what makes you uniquely qualified for this position? If you saw one of my cars, you see twenty thirteen Distinguished Alumni Award recipient from Lake South State College. If you turn over on the front of it, it says twenty sixteen Lake County Living Legends Award. Also, Hope International Church Shakers Award. That's saying that I'm always working for my community. Also, I'm a veteran of the United States Army, and this is, most of all, I like to say that I'm a man of God. If you're not a man of God, then why should you be over the city and its people? The people belongs to God, so I'm here to be a servant to them. I'm not a politician. I've been on the council for sixteen years. There must be something uniquely about me, John Griffin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We give all of our candidates a round of applause. Great job, and you really owe it to the Congress. Thank you Pastor Tony for having us here. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Smith for this question. What are two things that you think will foster positive environment for Groveland?
What are two things? Number one is involvement of the citizenry. You know, I think as of right now, I think the city is trying, is spearheading too many activities and not involving the citizens. I think we need to work at partnering with the citizens and the citizens groups so that the city can assist and be the sponsor and not the one that is actually doing all the labor. You know, because I am an individual that's all about building communities, and we cannot build communities and cannot lead a community if we don't involve the community. So therefore, I think we need to empower our citizens so that our citizens can feel that, hey, we are part of this community as we grow. We are not the ones that are just sitting there being the financiers, paying all the taxes and having very little to actually do. And at one time, we actually done that, but we have lost track sometimes because we have a lot of nonprofit organizations within our community, and we're not utilizing them to their full potential. You know, we should not be as a local government dictating everything we do in the city. You know, for instance, hosting Hope July in charge of Veterans Day activities. We got veteran organization that we need to engage in, and that's what my intention to do is engage the citizens.
Thank you.
I'd like to make an attempt to bring together the citizens of Groveland and also our businesses. And what I've come up with a plan, we have a building fund. We have probably pretty close to a million dollars in a building fund. This money is tied up by state statutes, pretty much almost unspendable. It can only be used to enforce building code. We need to draw down that money, otherwise we're going to continue to grow and also we could become in trouble with the state. So I came up with a plan where I'd like to take a half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, and I estimate there's about forty, I'm sorry, four thousand homeowners. What I'd like to do is have the council agree to do a one-time rebate where we give each homeowner a check for one hundred and twenty-five dollars with the encouragement to spend that money within the borders of Groveland. If we can take five hundred thousand dollars and we can turn it back and put it in the hands of people that can spend the money, which are the homeowners, encouraging them to spend it within our borders, if we can just keep eighty percent, that's going to be four hundred thousand dollars of our own money pumped back into the economy to our merchants, our vendors, and all of our contractors. But what I'd like to do is put out a letter, and on the back of a letter, thanking people for when they get the check, and list every single business that we have with the name, address, and phone number to encourage them to spend this money. And we're doing two things, we're drawing down the money we can't spend, we're putting it in the hands of people that can't.
Well, fostering a positive environment is going to be the underlying tone of what we need to do as Groveland citizens for the next decade, okay? It's something that we're going to have to be able to do. We're going to have to work together with our residents, our businesses. We have to get people involved in the activities and the demands that Groveland has, to be able to expect them to want to be vested in what's going on. We're all stakeholders in our city, and we want to be able to act that way, but we have to understand and make sure that you know that your input is being counted on. Your input makes a difference. That means establishing policies and procedures that you know are going to be followed by your city. You know it's going to be followed by everybody because it starts from the top down. It's going to be policies and procedures set by a committee that's made up of both public and the private sector so that all parties involved have a say in what goes on. That means you. It also means that we're going to be able to do more things to promote our businesses here, have more community network, help to make our businesses and our homes and the value that we have here seen publicly, give our residents an opportunity to know what our businesses have to offer. We need to create that awareness and let everyone know why all of us decided this is home. This is the place we want to live, we want to raise our family, and why it's the best place that we chose to call, you know, Groveland.
There's two things that I believe would go a long way towards promoting a positive environment. Number one is we need to get a business advisory committee together so all the businesses will know that we're standing behind them. Getting people together to help with the different activities is not easy. I have been doing this for most of my life, and once they get involved and they see it's going nowhere, they want to stop. But we need to push this issue and get everybody involved and bring more people down to downtown and have more events and get things going, and stand behind everybody and let them know that we're there no matter what happens.
I'm mindful of Groveland's history, yet I'm hopeful of what we can become. My plan is to find common ground for the residents in Groveland, and that is by creating an atmosphere where families can walk and shop and dine in the area. We can also look at other cities and adult programs and activities that they have that have been very successful, like Tallahassee, they have a program that's called the Longest Table where the entire community comes out and they dine together for an entire day about getting to know our neighbor. Because if we don't know our neighbor, we can't create an atmosphere of positiveness unless we reach out. I am willing to help folks extend a hand to government, and I'm willing to extend that hand back out to them to have a positive effect on the community.
I do not assume that the people sitting here tonight don't know what's been transpiring throughout the past year. Now, when you talk about a positive environment, we got to go a little bit higher than that. We got to have a positive environment with getting along with each other. We got to first get this dark cloud out of here and start all over again, and I started myself. As I've done previously, if I offended anyone, I ask you to forgive me. And it begins with each politician, so-called politician, that saying, well, I never started anything negative in this town. If you did, you better start getting a positive one because we need to start all over again. We not living in a movie set. It's a lot of things that are going on here. We got to get straight now.
Let me just say, positive environment, and I have to agree with Mr. Griffin, there's been a division in your government here in Groveland, and if you don't have that unity working with each other, your councilmen, your mayor, you'll never get the work done. You'll forget the people. People will be forgotten for that, and this is what exactly is going on. You know, I'm a member of the RAC Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, and we are in need of public facilities for recreational use for our citizens. We were able to accomplish in rebuilding the Griffins Park on Sappy Road, and that's, you know, part of the park and recreation. We don't get paid for that, we do that voluntarily. I've also served in Lake County MPO, bringing information to the city of Groveland and the city council and the mayor. So if we have more people involved, yes, but look, I'm looking here now today, this has been advertised for quite some time, and what is happening is that that division of not working together, the citizens continue to say, it's the same old game, same old game, politics as usual, and that's a bad signal when you do that, especially when you have your council in public forums and people are sitting there and are watching this.
That is time. Next candidate question is what will be your top priority during your next term in office?
We have a lot of problems in Groveland. We have a lot of challenges in Groveland, and like water rates and the Villa City coming in, a huge twenty-year complex coming in, and we have the police department and other things that we need. But I believe that the top priority has got to be the person who's going to be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city. All these problems are going to be dealt with by this individual, and that is the city manager. We now have interim city manager, and I think the top priority is getting a new city manager, and how we're going to do it, I'm not sure if the council's going to put out applications for it or if they're going to do a headhunter type of thing, but I think we need to move forward. The city manager will hire the police chief, because the police chief works for them, and the city manager works for the council. I like the model that Mascot issued to hire their police chief. They created a committee, I think it was four or five police chiefs themselves, and they know, who better would know what a police chief should be than five police chiefs? They went through the applications, they picked out who they thought, they vetted the people, and from what I've heard, Mascot now has the creed of the creed. I would like to see that kind of operation happen in Groveland, like again, he's responsible to the city manager.
My top priority with everything that we've all been through over the last year, my top priority is going to be re-establishing and re-earning the trust of our community. Nothing else happens without that. That's the backbone of everything that we need to go here, to go forward from here. That means operating in complete transparency, making sure that you are kept aware of everything that's going on, and no more secrets, no more things happening in the darkness, no more surprises on you a year later. Better communication starts from the top down. It starts with the council members that you should hold accountable, right down through the administration that we hold accountable. It means that we're going to have reports done by the administrative department heads so that they can be held accountable and their staff to them. It also means that that accountability is going to be something that's going to bring credibility to what we do now. I also think that creating Groveland's positive image is also a high priority for me. We've seen way too much of them. We need to be able to show and focus on making sure that everyone, not just in Groveland and Lake County, but all over, understand what we understand in this room, and that Groveland is more than what you see on the nightly news, or more than the stories and the reports that you read about. This is a city where we raise our family, where we raise our children, where we start our businesses. This is a place that we, starting at the head, your council member that you choose to elect to serve, have to be able to get out in the voice and be in your voice, not just sit quiet in a room, not never be seen. We are who you rely on.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Morris on his issue, but we also need to attract new businesses. We have so much growth in Groveland. We've gone from eight thousand to twelve thousand to thirteen thousand to seventy-seven residents, and we don't have enough businesses to support these people. We need to bring in more and specific types of businesses, which has been an ongoing priority since I took office. One of the ways we can do this is by using our consultant, Mr. Marvin Purrier, to advise a council on retail strategies with the goal of attracting businesses to Groveland as well as offering positive economic incentives to help attract specific types downtown and will grow. And then we have the Villa City which is coming in, and that one's going to be huge. It could be a city within a city, but we've got so many people moving here because we are known as a safe city that we need to attract more businesses to keep the people in town instead of having to go to Orlando or Tampa to go to work. We need them to work in Groveland as well as live in Groveland.
Picking and picking on the last two people that spoke, we do need to build trust back in our government, especially in our city. Just today, an article came out about what happened here this past week. That is not a good light on our city, and people are not going to trust the people that are sitting here if those are the types of articles that they have to read on a daily basis. So I want my top priority to be to reach out to these people, to go to their doors, to go to their community HOA meetings, and let them know that we are people that they can entrust their money, their dollars, their livelihoods, because they have to live, work, and play in this city, and if they can't trust us with that, they're going to move away. So the first thing we have to do that is top priority is to build trust again in our
First of all, I'd like to say that I was born and raised here in Groveland. First of all, I'd like to say that I was born and raised here in Groveland. And a lot of the places where your houses is was orange groves. My brother and I used to go dove hunting, we used to go fishing, right where your houses is. But what attracted y'all to come to Groveland? And if there was a good sense of environment back then, then there should be added on a greater sense of environment for those to come later on. And I guarantee you, when people look in your heart, and a lot of them looked in my heart, said, "John, you honest. You're not like promoting yourself to be this or that." And I tell them, "I'm not a politician. I'm a human being just like they are." And I would just say my priority is to have environment that's safe, conducive for kids to be raised up and educated in this neighborhood. But as I was saying, Groveland is a beautiful place. I love Groveland and always will. And whatever I can do to make Groveland a better place, I'll do that. Call it home, sweet home. I don't mean Alabama. I mean Groveland.
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, for that next term of office, I would like to see that we're fiscal responsible and working with a surplus and not with a debt. That will be my priority in the next term. Is to use common sense, how the money is being spent, where it's being spent, and hold people accountable to it. And then this is one of the issues that's really affecting Groveland. In the past, decisions that have been made without using common sense, where the dollars should go, how it should be used, or where it should be allocated. And that would be one of my priorities, to make sure that we cannot, and I say I cannot do, in one year, be sure that we won't have a surplus. But that next term, that would be absolutely for sure that there will be a surplus of not working with a debt because we've worked with a debt in the past before. You know, given the fact of the economic crisis that we had, it has been a farm on homeowners. It's been home. Thank you.
Many, I'm the last one, but many of our candidates have already spoken on issues, things that I was going to say, but none of them spoke on the one thing that I think is paramount, you know, is building a leadership team. You can elect anyone that you feel to be a leader. But it takes a leader to build a leadership team. And this is what this election is all about. It's not just electing any one of us. There's three of us who can date for me. And the choice is you, the citizens. But the underlying point is, which one of us is going to be the one to establish what we really need on this council? We need structure. We need someone that's going to sit there and guide them and be a consensus builder, not someone to stir up the pot. You know, right now, we are, I consider them as the landfill. Everything, everybody want to dump things on and you want to run with rules. This is not what leaders do. Leaders filter information. And then they come to a consensus. And that consensus should always be the citizenry first. And from there, we move the city forward. And I think this is very, very important. Right now, our leadership team, we're just taking year and year. But we have a leadership team and we have a management team, you know? The leadership team directs the management team. Thank you.
Next question. What ideas do you have to manage growth or being fiscally responsible, Mr. Morris?
Our city is growing, and that means that we have to be able to understand that and grow with it. When my wife Wendy and I got here and decided this is what we were going to call home, our population was just over seven thousand. Today, it's almost double that. We need to do something. We need to streamline some of the processes we have in order to attract businesses and to be able to hold on to our existing businesses. We need to make our system more business-friendly. We can't have business growth. We can't have jobs. We can't have our kids graduating and being able to find a job and stay here if we don't be able to manage that effectively. We need to make that system work for everyone. We also need to be able to review that system on a regular basis and make sure that our fees and charges and things that we're doing are competitive with what's being done, not just in Groveland but around the county and around all of Central Florida. Another thing I think we need to do is set up and monitor a new business program. And we need to have something in place. An idea that I wanted to bring about was to assign a liaison that's going to work with all new businesses to make sure that transition becomes very smooth and easy as they're coming in so they don't fall into any pitfalls and hurdles. And to be able to review that program on a regular basis to make sure that every business coming in and every business that struggled to be here with us is avail themselves of all the possibilities and opportunities they have to be successful. That's why we're here and that's why we're looking for you, Ron.
I have supported and voted for the lower mileage rate since I've been in office. I voted for a reduction in property taxes for the 2016-17 fiscal year, which started in October 2016. With our taxes being low, more people will move to Groveland. When more people move to Groveland, we will increase our tax base. As Mr. Morris said and I said before, our city is growing by leaps and bounds. But we don't want just residents. We want businesses. We want corporations. We want manufacturing. And we do not have enough of that right now. If we work hard enough and pay attention to what's going on and keep our eyes on the pot, so to speak, we can make these things happen by giving incentive packages to those who want to come and start businesses. Even a small one. I was talking to a gentleman the other day who wants to open a Cuban bakery. So I'm helping him find a spot for that, but that's just the start. A bakery here, a shoe shop, a dress shop, even a hair cutterie. I mean, every little business counts and we just have to keep our eye on the pie, as they say.
The foundation of Groveland management and being fiscally responsible actually rests on four footers. A vision and developed plan, regulations, and processes. For us to be successful, we have to have a vision, a vision of what we want to be. What does Groveland actually want to be? Without that vision, we're going to grow haphazardly. And it's going to be very costly to the citizens here in Groveland. As part of establishing a vision, we must also have a strategic plan and an initiative to make sure that we follow through. And in effort to do that, we have to utilize our stakeholders. Our stakeholders are our residents and those businesses that are in our community. We must gather them at the table and make sure they have a seat and be a part of this vision and a part of this plan. And be a part of setting the policies and regulations for the city. That is the only way we're going to be able to manage the growth and be fiscally responsible for the dollars that they entrust us with.
Let me start off by saying, even in Washington DC, the candidates for the presidency saying what they're going to do, "I'm going to do this and I'm going to do that." Don't you know if it wasn't for the Congress, the Senate, they can't do anything. And also, I'd just like to say, the key word is manage growth. You got to have a city manager that will do that for you. Without you looking over his shoulder or micromanaging him, telling him what to do. We got to rely on a good city manager and the cadre of people up under him. Then every now and then, we check to see how things are going. But we, as council members, got to let them do their job and let them be the ambassadors to the world, let them be the ambassadors to new people coming in. And then we sit back and say, "Well, are you managing according to what's conducive for the people of Groveland?" Thank you.
Groveland in Groveland, until we begin to market, and I say market Groveland, we need to put some incentives together so that we can share what Groveland is about. We have plenty of land. We have an industrial park that in the 2008, a lot of companies moved out. And yeah, we do need manufacturing and all other type of businesses. But until we market Groveland properly, businesses are not going to know where we at until we put it out there throughout the United States. New York is doing it. Why can't we do it? Our theme is watch us grow. I think that if we do that and put in an incentive, CD together, or a thumb drive that we can put out to the Lake County Economic Development, people to do their job for Groveland and market Groveland, that's part of their responsibility, but it's also part of staff and management here in Groveland. And that will work. Thank you.
Economic development is very, very important to the growth of any community. You know, uniquely, I have been a part of that from the beginning. I have been, I initiated a lot of this growth in our city today. I was a mayor at the time when public approached the city about a site to develop a supermarket. And I know what it takes. You know, it takes sitting across the table. It also take making contact, using our staff to the fullest potential. And especially our economic development, our building and our planners. We have skillful people, but we have to give them the ideas so they can reach out and make those connections. But at the same time, we have to understand the smart growth principles that is in place in the state of Florida. We have to also encourage growth by forming private and public partnerships so that we don't, as a community, that we can give back some of the things, I didn't say give back, or waive a lot of these fees that these developers have to pay out of their pockets upfront. We just done that, you know, eighteen months ago with Hunt Industrial Park. And right now, today, that one development has brought over nine million dollars to its community. So that's the power of private and public partnerships.
I think the question on manage growth and fiscal responsibility is that we must be held accountable to the public. We have to be held accountable to the taxpayer. We have to be able to tell them that there are projects that we need and we need their support. I've always supported the water issues in Groveland. I've always supported infrastructure for water. Infrastructure for water is expensive. And you can't build homes, you can't build buildings and bring business in if you can't provide water to them. So we have to bite the bullet and we have to build and put in, in place, in the dirt, the infrastructure to deliver water. We're not dealing with rocket science here. We're not reinventing the wheel. There have been civilizations around for five thousand years of water. The municipalities have been delivering water to their citizens for five thousand years in one form or the other. We can do this. We don't have to invent things. Other cities are very successful with water. We can reach out to them. I've asked this question many times at meetings. What are these other cities doing that they can charge less money than Groveland? What do we need that they have? What infrastructure do they have that we don't have? This is not rocket science, but we have to be fiscally responsible. We have to be able to sell our public that these are the issues we need and we need their help and we're going to spend their money responsibly as we move our growth.
Next question. How do you plan to promote and grow business in Groveland?
I was just one of the people who voted for an aggressive economic incentive package that resulted in ten million dollars in new and expanded businesses over the last two years. I supported and voted to re-establish the Groveland Commerce Park, which, when fully built out, will result in 1.5 million dollars in property tax revenue, which will reduce the amount of residential property taxes. And I supported the use of a retail strategy consultant to help market the city and the CRA own vacant properties, which should help attract new businesses to our city. We are looking at a small town that is starting to boom with just residents. Whatever Claremont has is coming our direction and we have to be ready for that. We have to have something in place that says, "Yes, you can put this business here. Yes, you can put that business there. And we're going to put a new community over here." Yes, we want residents to come, but we really need to bring in the businesses. But we need to keep an eye on how, when, where, and why.
Businesses need a high quality of life. I was turned out by Corollion, the quality of life that we have here in Groveland. Is it a place that you want to move your company and have your employees live, work, and play here in Groveland? We have to have those things in place to support the businesses and the residents that they want to move in. We have to support our schools because people don't move their kids and their families into communities that don't have schools. So we have to provide things that adds value to the company to, in order for them to want to move here and their employees to want to follow. So I would actually focus on the high quality of life that Groveland offers. We have beautiful parks and lakes and everything. We have no taxes and we are safe. So I would promote the positive things about Groveland to attract more businesses here.
All the things, the good things that they were saying previously, I agree with. There are formulas to make the city better. But you know, as a formula, you got to have some experimentation and you got to have experience. Let's cut it to the chase. If you've got a city that's not monitoring the employees, if you've got nasty employees being nasty to the public, that's something to deal with. When you've got cold enforcement and you've got inspectors who are running away business and being nasty to people, you can't have that in a city. So we got to, got to monitor how people going to represent this council and represent the city. Now, all you're saying is cute, it's nice, and it's real good for Groveland. But you got to monitor a lot of undercurrents that make people turn around and say, "I don't want to go to Groveland" because they act so nasty. Thank you.
Well, you know, again, marketing Groveland, it's very important. And if we don't market Groveland, we won't grow. Creating business incentives, as the other candidates have mentioned before, and creating an economic incentive for companies to establish their companies here, that would have to be part of the incentive package. And marketing Groveland, if the only direction that they're doing it in New York, New York has built many companies, has settled in New York. I don't know how many of you has watched on television or commercials, building, starting up in New York. Okay, so if we, our theme is watch us grow, but what are we growing? If we don't market Groveland. If we start marketing Groveland in the right direction and offering up an incentive package, as we've done with Hunt Industrial, more companies are going to have more interest to lower the unemployment rate that we have right now here in Groveland, which I don't really know what that number is, but there is an unemployment rate here in Groveland that is pretty much up there. So if we don't market our city and we don't attract businesses and create a incentive package for them, then we're just losing the cause. Thank you.
I think if we want to promote growth and new businesses and grow business in our community, we have to know what businesses are looking for. And how you do that is you got to act just like the businesses. We have to understand that the power of the internet is tremendous. And we have to use what they use. Our developers out there in these big companies, they know exactly to T what's going on in Groveland right at this present. Because they go on the internet and all that data is readily available. So what we have to do, we have to get smart just like them and think outside of the box. You know, we have to know quality of life is paramount to any community. No company is gonna come if they don't have good schools. If they don't have institutions that can educate their employees. If they don't have the recreational things in place. And we're lacking in recreation, you know? And this is what we have to do as elected officials. We have to know what they, what they're looking for. And that's not hard to do. You know, it's more than just going to meetings and coming back and reporting. It's about making contacts and knowing who to talk to and find out what they're looking for. You know, Claremont is growing. Groveland is gonna grow. It's no doubt about it. The key is, are we ready for it? That's the key as a leader, what we need to be mindful of.
My plan to promote and grow business in Groveland. There's one entity that has not been addressed tonight and that is the CRA, Community, uh, the Community Redevelopment Agency. This is an, an agency that was formed in two thousand and two. They have thirty years to redevelop the, the underdeveloped portions of Groveland. When you drive down fifty, you get into downtown, that, that's the CRA. I would like to see the CRA board, which has five members from the council, redo some of their, their ideas that they achieved over here. Downtown, they used to have a side grant. A business moving in could get, could apply for it, get twelve thousand five hundred dollars. If you go downtown, you see the restaurants and everything, they have nice freshman painted buildings and all. These were for side grants. Now, the CRA board changed it to ten percent. And I'll tell you why I don't think this is a good idea. A woman came in and she put in a, a, a slide. She put forty-four thousand dollars of her own money into a building that was in great need of repair. She got four thousand dollars. We, we paid it back to her. Under the old plan, she already got twelve thousand five hundred. I think if a business is willing to go in downtown area, they're willing to put their own money and take a building that's sitting there idle for years and turn it around, we need as a city, that's the thing. Thank you.
My plan to promote and grow business in Groveland starts with the businesses in Groveland. We need to develop a relationship and a trust between our businesses here so that they feel comfortable reaching out to the people they do business with already and allowing us the opportunity to offer those businesses to have a presence here in our city. To show them how important it is, how we can be part of that future for them. But we've got to earn that with our businesses. That's where it begins. We also need to be willing to reach into areas that we recently have not been willing to reach into, such as international business. About eight months ago, with the help of our city manager, I wrote a program and we went around and we presented it to several of the cities all throughout Lake County. To fast forward, that program was accepted as a pilot program by the city, by the county manager. And now, all five of the largest cities in Lake County are promoting that program as a pilot that I wrote eight months ago. That is a sixty billion dollar a year industry that our businesses need to tap into. And finally, we need to develop relationships that's gonna help us bring jobs and help us bring revenue to our city, again, being positive outside of the city. I can't express highly enough how important it is for you to expect, you to demand us to be willing to go out and speak for you. That's our job. That's the job we want. We have to be willing to go out, raise a voice and be a leader for you in this city, to be a voice that you can count on. And that's what you need to be expecting. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, each candidate will be given ninety seconds to make the closing remark.
I'm prepared to serve in the council for the balance of experience, fresh and imaginative perspective. I've seen and lived in other cities and I decided that Groveland is the place for me and my family. Our potential is boundless for the right leadership. We all know the heavy issues that are waiting in the next city council. I am ready to jump in with a vision to move us forward and continue to watch us grow.
I would like to say, first of all, being a man who, I've had police officers and different people come and sit in my bedroom and say, Mr. Griffith, we can count on you being a man who prays for the city. And I pray every night before I come to a meeting. And also, I'd like to say, well, I love this city. And I've been on this council for sixteen years. And if God wants me on, if he wants me on, I tell anybody, the ballot's already been counted. And if God wants me to work and continue on this council, I'll do the best I can and I will do whatever he tells me to do for the best and development of this city. And also, why reinvent the wheel? We're rolling along so smoothly. And I thank you for your time and I thank the pastor and this first lady for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
First, let me thank you, the folks, the American people for the city of Groveland, for coming out, taking some time from your schedule, your families, your loved ones. I wanna thank my wife for coming to be here tonight. Uh, I will say that I, I am prepared to lead this city. I would look forward for a council that will be united and work for the people of the city of Groveland. Extremely important. No doubt about it, because if you don't have that unity in council, nothing is gonna get done. And I am prepared to bring council and unite councils that will then start flourishing. What is being done in council will reflect outside in our city, that things are going the right way, that we should be going. I wanna thank you, the American people, for coming out here to lead Groveland. Thank you.
First of all, I don't have to talk so fast. I got ninety seconds, so I can slow down. First of all, I want, I wanna thank Pastor Tony and his wife and the South Lake Chamber for inviting us and hosting this for us. But also, I wanna thank you, the citizens, for coming out and participating. At least you hear our voice. At least you understand our particular standpoints. You know, but I believe that I am, of the three candidates that is bound to be your next mayor, you know, I believe I am the best candidate. I believe I am proven. And I'm not talking just to be taught. You can go out and say, oh, you pull the records. And you can see what I have been doing in this community, not only just now, just for this election period, but for the last twenty-three years. I have been active and I have been changing this community by committing myself, not just for, to be heard or seen. I've never praised myself or nothing like that because it's not about me. It's about you, this community. And all of my decisions is I always and will be the citizen first. I have no hidden agendas. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our hosts for putting on this event tonight. And I would like to thank everybody in the audience for coming out, giving up some time to come out to listen to us. I'd like to read you something. On February twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, Orlando Sentinel columnist, Lord Ritchie wrote, "Better one thousand residents like Glenn Wilson than one thousand uninvolved sheep who don't care." Ladies and gentlemen, I am that Glenn Wilson and I'm running for the office of mayor. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank every one of you for coming out and giving us an opportunity for you to be able to listen to our points or views, to see we're more than just a billboard or just a sign and you deserve more than just that. Every one of you knows exactly why Groveland is so important to us, why it's important to myself and my wife. This is what we call home. This is what we believe is the best place to live, to raise a family, to raise our grandchildren. We expect more than what we're getting. You need council members who have the experience, who have the management and have the will and the desire to do for you what you expect to have done. To be a leader, not just within Groveland, not just at behind that table at a council meeting, but everywhere you see them, everywhere they are. They need to be speaking for you, speaking how well it is, talking about why this is the place for businesses to grow, why Groveland is the place for families to be raised. If they're not doing that, then they're not doing you justice. I have always been a leader. From my time in the service to my time in management and business and finance, that's what I do. I've always run point whenever it comes to standing out in front. I've been, like I tell Pastor Tony, I've been at Joshua. I'm willing to stand up for you and that's what I wanna do. That's the job I enjoy. And if you give me the honor, you give me the opportunity to speak for you, I will always make sure that your voice is heard and that everyone knows why Groveland is a place of respect, love and where families are to be raised. And I thank you all for coming out.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank Pastor Tony and his wife for having this event in the South Lake Chamber. And I have lived in Groveland for fourteen years. I have been working the events of Groveland for the last twelve. I have served on a lot of committees and I enjoy it, but there's a lot more to it. If you wanna, if you wanna be seen and be heard, you have to stand up and pay attention. You have to pay, you have to pay attention to the businesses, to the residents and to the budget. The budget is a very important part of the city. And if it slips away, then you can lose a lot. But I am ready to, to serve for the next two years if you give me that opportunity and I thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. And in closing, I'd like to say, I, I think we're all very blessed to have a great group of candidates here. Let's give them a round of applause. And then we thank all of them for coming out this evening. Have a great night.
Guys, let's give our candidates another big round of applause, please. I just wanna thank our, our travels and thank you again. Thank you all for coming out. Can we all stand, please? Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that you brought us all together, not for ourselves, but for the betterment of the community. I pray, Lord, even as we depart this place, that your spirit will go with us and that your mindset was dwell within us, that as we lead individuals, you would, we would have the agenda of your heart at hand. I pray for safe travels. Uh, Lord, I pray for your joy to be experienced by every member, every, every member here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.